The public hearing meeting tonight for Monday, May the 27th. Excuse me. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear input on an amendment to the District of Hope zoning bylaw, law number 13242012. Let's get the tongue going today. The District of Hope zoning amendment by law number 14572019. I have to start off by reading a chairperson's statement, and then we'll get into the meeting. "The public hearing is being convened pursuant to the community charter and the local government act. In accordance with the charter, the time and place of the public hearing was advertised in two editions of the Hope Standard newspaper. In accordance with the District of Hope application procedure and public hearing information meeting procedural bylaw, number 1393, and the local government act, the required specifications have been compiled." "At this public hearing, any persons who believe that their interest in the subject property is affected by the proposed agenda item may speak or present written submissions to council on this matter. As chairperson, I will read any written briefs from persons unable to attend this public hearing so that they may become part of the record. Those who wish to speak should, when invited to speak, clearly state their name and address for the record. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to the matter contained in the bylaw. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views known. Members of council may ask questions of those making presentations. The main function of council at the public hearing is to listen to the comments of the public, not to debate the merit of the bylaw. Members of council may debate any issues on the bylaw at the time of the third or final reading. The order of proceedings will be as follows. The Director of Community Development will briefly describe the matters under consideration and provide a brief explanation of the proposed bylaw. The applicant or agent for the applicant may be invited to make comments. All written submissions will form part of the record of the public hearing. Oral submissions from the public will be heard, and any further written submissions, if any, will be received. The public hearing will be closed. No further submissions, either verbal or written, regarding the proposed bylaw can be made to council following the public hearing. After this public hearing is concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect it believes proper to the representations made at this public hearing." So at this time, I won't give the oral brief at first, and then I'll do what you like to turn over to you, Director Gill.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Your worship, through you, the proposal that's come before us is the applicant would like to rezone the property from single-family residential RS1 to two-family residential RT1. In order to permit a secondary suite, the intent would be to convert the existing basement into a suite area as per the PC Building Code. As with the RT1 zone, it does also allow for consideration for a duplex, be it, in this case, it would be a top and bottom. However, the immediate intention is for a secondary suite.
All right, thank you. I have some public submissions that, well, maybe I'll read these first, and then we'll go to the public. There's a petition that was circulated throughout the neighborhood, and it's addressed to us, stop the rezoning of the 648 Willow Street. We, the undersigned owners of the property on Willow Street, affected by the requested zoning change described in the reference file, do hereby protest against any change to the land development code, which would zone the property to any other classification other than its present zone laws. Reasons for the petition: Well-established neighborhood with kids and grandkids that are now able to play safely through the entire neighborhood. No traffic congestion now; rezoning would increase traffic patterns in and around 648 Willow. Easy in and out access for entire neighborhood already exists. Always has been considered a very desirable street to live on, and we feel very strongly that it should be kept that way as one-family dwellings. Increased traffic and noise is a very real concern that cannot be overlooked." And that was signed by B. Johnson, C. Shirley, W. Shirley, P. Martin, J. Calagutti, J. Nichols, D. Sims, E. Nelson, J. Rodney, S. Sullivan, M. and A. Reichelt, F. and V. Lorillard, and J. and R. Van Gage. We also received a form letter signed by other presidents as well. This one's to the District of Hope rezoning application by M. Barker and T. Watson for 648 Willow Street, to whom they concern. Please accept this letter's support for the proposed rezoning plan for 648 Willow Street, O.P.C., from single-family residential RS1 to two-family residential RT1, in order to create a secondary suite. We are the owners of, and they listed properties and have been since 2015. We are affected by this rezoning project, and we support it. The owner and landlords of this rental property are the Robbins parents, our Robbins parents, excuse me, Mike Barker and Terry Watson. Knowing them and their history of rental properties, we have faith that they will ensure that 648 Willow Street remains a respectable property in our neighborhood. This rezoning project is in accordance with the District of Hope's Integrated Official Community Plan that has an objective to support a variety of housing types, lot sizes, and densities, to meet the changing needs of current and future residents. Subjected 2.2, page 36, of the District of Hope Integrated Official Community Plan from November 2018. This is followed by policy 2.2.1, to encourage the rezoning of lands to provide greater housing, diversity, and affordability by supporting and prioritizing secondary dwellings. We support this rezoning initiative and will be happy to answer any further questions." And that submission was signed by R. Barker, and you're gonna have to help him with that for two ter.
Two ter.
Thank you very much. M. Bergen, S. Guchu, and M. Drummond. Are there any late submissions, Director Gill?
Your worship.
Okay. Well, we'll proceed to the public portion of the meeting. If anyone has to come forward and addresses, please state your name and address. You're welcome to come to the podium.
Ladies. I won't take too much of your time, but on the petition, they are dead against it being zoned differently for the reasons after stated. Now, it goes further on than that, because the last three months has been terrible around that rental home. I have statements from letters that I will hand you from the immediate neighbors on both sides that are both on and age and have had their sleep disrupted many times over the last three months. One of them's had two surgeries and has had to go through late nights, profanity, laughter, drugs, marijuana floating in through where they're trying to sit outside. And I talked to Mike Barker about not that, because I didn't know anything about that. And at the time, I shared my thoughts with him about it. I have four grandkids that are gonna be living right across the street of the purchased property, and I'm very worried about the access traffic, as I have seen some of it already. And I've only been there two weeks, and I've already seen it. So we're very worried about ruining what was, is one of the most pristine avenues in Hope. It is one thing to look after one rental place, but it's another to have two rental places upstairs and downstairs. So I'm not gonna say too much more about it, but that's how most people on Willow Street feel about it. And some of them have been there for 60 years. And I think six or seven of them might have lived there for 50-plus years. So raised families, I think, I don't know how many kids raised on that street, but it's a very pristine avenue in Hope, so we'd like to keep it that way.
Will I please be, most of us know you, of course, but for the record officially, we need your name and your address, please.
Oh, sorry. W. Shirley, 347 Dubnese Street. Thank you very much. And I thank you for taking the time. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
I'm going to, for sure. And I prefer that if anybody else would like to, they can.
Good morning, Your Worship and Council. My name is Troy Davis. I live at 640 Maple Street. I'm here to speak in favor of the rezoning of 648 Willow Street. Our community is desperate for more rental housing. Rzoning this property will provide another affordable home for a family. The family's kids will be able to play in our safe and inviting neighborhood where minimal traffic, the minimal traffic that we enjoy, is respectful. Kids ride bikes, rollerblading, and walking dogs on our streets. One family will not make any spitting impact to the amount of traffic on our streets, nor will it change the ease of access into our neighborhood. In addition, one additional basement suite in a house that has been a rental unit since well before the current owners bought it in this street will not make this street undesirable. The only noise increase that I anticipate is more parents and kids enjoying living in such a family-friendly area.
Thank you for your submission.
Will you go?
Anyone else?
My name's Patrick Doother. I submitted a, one of the letters earlier. I live at 695 Willow Street. I've been there for, I guess, four years now, and I hope to have a family there someday myself. I am for the change, for the rezoning. I disagree with his statement of it being busier, or I don't know if he's alluding to it being more dangerous, somehow. I am very comfortable living there. There's renters in that house, there's renters next door to me. They all have kids. It is a good neighborhood still, and it would be with another family living nearby.
Thank you for your submission.
Hi. Stephanie Hooker, 345 Ferry Landing, and I support the rezoning. Council created a zone that allowed for permanent legal suites, and now you have residents uptakeing you on that. And when they uptake you on that, it gives you a chance to monitor, regulate that zoning use, and see if it's working for you. And in your IOCP, it states that we need to densify. We need to provide more variety and quality of both rental stock and homes for purchase. Rental stock being the biggest shortage right now. We have less than 2% vacancy rate in Hope, and it's driving cost of living way up. It means that we don't have workforce housing, which impacts which businesses can expand and move to Hope as well. So bottom line is, I feel for neighborhoods as they go through changes, but the homeowner here is coming in good faith to have a legally designated secondary rental suite, and Hope is on the cusp of a housing crisis. And so densification, when done appropriately, is what we need to do. So I hope, in your consideration, you consider the community's needs and the application.
Thank you for that submission. Are you ready to come up?
Yes. My glasses. So my name is Terry Watson, and my address is 75 Line 7th Avenue in Hope. I am a co-owner and the applicant, co-applicant for this zoning application. I'm here to support the application, of course, to rezone the property. My husband, Mike Barker, would dearly have loved to have been here, considering that he has spent a great deal of time and energy in the last few months since we purchased the property in November. He spent the time talking to the neighbors before we bought the property, not all of them, of course, just a couple, and during the time of our renovation, and considerably since receiving the letter of opposition. It probably would have been better to meet our neighbors, or more of the neighbors, with a block barbecue than with a letter of opposition. But nevertheless, we've met many of them and had an opportunity to talk to them both during our rezoning or zoning application, and following the letter of opposition, and certainly following that big, huge sign that he put up there with his telephone in the letter. It's reasonable. We respectfully acknowledge the opportunity for people to have an opinion, and particularly the people who have signed the letter in opposition to our application. That's an opportunity that we have in our democracy, and we appreciate that, where we can voice our opinion without being bribed, or bullied, or shot at. When we do the newspaper, we can appreciate that we live in a lovely town in Hope. As a background, and a little bit of a background, you've read the, and we all understand that the planning department has looked at it, but to put a few more words around the application and why they kept reviewing it, is that we have spent, first of all, we are a bit, we have the ability to purchase rental property in Hope. We have another rental property. It is within a block of where we live. We are not absentee landlords, and you've heard that my daughter lives down the street, and so therefore we are in the neighborhood. We're happy to, with our money and our retirement years, to purchase rental property to support the ability for people to pay off the rent in this community as opposed to purchase. We communicated with the neighbors, as I said a little bit before, certainly during. My husband is now retired, so he has the time and energy, not enough time and energy, has, for all the things I'd like him to do, but, you know, quite a bit, to take care of our rental properties, as well as going on his motorcycle trips. We are not new landlords. We have been landlords for most of our married life, and we moved to Hope in 1987. About '84, '85, we bought property in about that time. It's a little fuzzy, let's speak for our kids, or in the middle of kids. And we owned a triplex in Hope, and we sold that, and we rented out a portion of our house in Hope. Whoops, I don't think I should tell you that. No, I declared that on my income tax. And we have, as I say, the property across from us, within a block of us, and now the Willow Street property. Renters come and go, and they are not always perfect, as Wally probably knows. They're not, he has renters living beside him, I think that he's not real happy with, but maybe you are. But renters create challenges, and they are not perfect, and they're not all a piece of cake. The point here is that we know that there have been, of course, we know that there have been definite or particularly written complaint recently about the builders that we have now. The district has received a complaint, and when we became aware of it, in talking to Mr. and Mrs. Syme's son, we did something about it, okay? We addressed the issue with the renter and also with a letter to the neighbors. So we bothered to do that. I think the focus, though, needs to be on the point that this piece of rental property fits with the District of Hope, District of Hope's Integrated Official Community Plan. It encourages, and yet that portion of the plan, which you heard read out in Robin's letter, and I won't repeat it, because you're probably quite aware of it and intimate with it. It encourages rezoning of lands to provide greater housing and diversity. So we're doing that, and we're doing it, hopefully, in legal fashion here, not just an illegal building, or an illegal suite. It's not that much fun to have your status quo changed. The people who've lived in the neighborhood have enjoyed that neighborhood for quite some time, and I understand that, and I appreciate it. But it is appropriate that, and connected, that our application fits with what the council and the people in this community have considered and would like to, and have agreed upon in terms of infill and carriage houses and more rental property. I won't belabor the point. I appreciate your consideration and deliberation, and I hope that you support our application.
Does Congress, Council, any questions to the other?
These written submissions, I'd like these to be read before any decisions made. I didn't get them in time by any point in seconds, so who do I give them to?
You'll have to help me out with this, Ms. Bellinian, on these.
We can receive them, and we'll have to read them into the record.
Yes. And another thing that was just said, going to the, about Mike going, talking to the neighbors about his plan. His plan at that time was submitted, that he was gonna live in the basement. That's a totally different thing than what just submitted right now, and I'd like that now for the record. As far as the statements of the people in there now being good renters, I'll have to leave it up to you to read these letters, because I didn't live right beside them. That's very important in this matter, like, very important, because it's been, since the weather turned, since the springtime, it's been horrendous. I didn't live beside it, but I'm going by what the people that are living beside on both sides and on that street say. It's very important that what was presented in the first place was that he was gonna live, they were gonna live in the basement, and that's a different, that's a totally different thing.
Ms. Bellinian, so I should, I need to read these into the record tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you give that to me, while I, please?
If you'd like, we can make up.
And one more thing. I don't know what the protocol is and this and that, but everybody that signed the petition Mike went to, Mike Barker went to, and in some fashion, they felt like they were scolded for signing this petition. Now, I don't know how he got the petition, I don't really, I'm not sure unless, I don't know what, whether he's allowed to get the petition or what, but actually, all of those people were offended that signed the petition, and that also, I feel, is very, very important. They were really offended by demonstrating their right and being challenged by not waiting till the meeting. Thank you very much.
So is there an opportunity to speak to Mr. Sherman's comments?
Petition, just a query, is a public topic.
Yeah, so this should be read, I should read this now? Is it a public record?
Before we close the meeting, yes, it has to be read.
Pardon me?
Before the meeting is closed, it has to be recorded, read in.
And then you want to speak?
To Mr. Sherman's comments, yes. To deny that Mike would ever have said that we were gonna live in basement, that that was our plan. That wasn't our plan. This is a rental. Perhaps he's thinking that in the letter that we submitted, in communication with the neighbors, it is a place where we could live, okay? Perhaps you took it that way. It was not, and the other part of Wally's comments was, and it's interesting that he's speaking for all the people, all the people who felt scolded, but he was not one of those people that were part of Mike's communication. So it's an interesting observation that I see Mike going to people to say, "So, how is it going?", or, "We heard you did this, what's up?" It's communication. It wasn't intended, of course, to be scolding, and if they felt that way, I'm sorry, but it wasn't intended to be scolding, and it is interesting to me that Wally is speaking on behalf of those people instead of those people choosing to say, "I felt scolded", okay? Thank you for letting me have another opportunity.
Thank you. At this time, then, I'll read this into the record. Seems to, there is, it seems to be all around the same family.
There are three letters from my grown adult children and two from Doreen Sims.
I'm just trying to get, they're all talking about Pearl Martin, and then my parents, and then, so I'm just trying to get it straight. So there's. Is Chris, is Chris a relative of yours?
Chris and John Sims are Doreen Sims' children. They sent letters, and my three adult children sent letters.
Okay, that explains, thank you, explains that, and this. All right, let's start with this one. It's about the rezoning, and it's directed to the District of Hope Planning Department. It's with great disappointment that I address you regarding the proposed proposal of rezoning 648 Willow Street, those properties directly adjacent to our family home, and will most certainly change the landscape and overall feeling of the present single-family dwelling neighborhood. Our dad, the late Neil Martin, and Pearl Martin purchased three lots in 1960, and they built our family home at 656 Willow Street on one of the lots. Dad put in long hours at work to pay off the properties, and the neighborhood grew as many families built their present family homes. Although my parents chose to sell one of the lots, our mom continues to work hard to maintain these properties and does so with great pride. What she isn't able to do herself, we help with, and she hires neighbors to do the rest. Our family home still provides us, our grown children, and extended family wonderful gatherings throughout the year. Several of the original neighboring families also reside nearby, and their children and grandchildren visit regularly as well. Recently, the property, 648 Willow Street, became home to a group of rental occupants. Although they at first were respectful and quiet, the home has, in the past couple of months, become smoky, loud, belligerent, and bothersome to us and neighboring families. I've experienced this personally in the last month for myself. Traffic has also increased, and outdoor gatherings have become more frequent in the warmer weather. I have had to close the window in the back guest room because of the smoldering outdoor fire and noise during the night. Although I agree that more multifamily housing is needed in Hope, the neighborhood around Willow Street is not the place for this. It is a single-family neighborhood lined with children playing beside, with children playing beside and on the street. This is not the place for increased traffic and densification. There are better places for this in Hope, where the zoning is already a place for such ventures. If the homeowner wished to capitalize on such development, then why did he not purchase a building already zoned for this? Why should the present homeowners and families on Willow Street have to sacrifice their quiet, respectful residential neighborhood for a plan that crept up to surprise them, all under the guise of improving the home? My husband and I are also homeowners in Hope, and would expect this type of development occurring areas that are far more suitable for multifamily housing and this year traffic. Willow Street is not one of these areas. Sincerely, Norine Ankovich. Thank you. That was the first one. It's about the same properties. This is from, I believe, your daughter, Brenda?
Yes.
Is that correct? My parents, Neil and Pearl Martin, bought these three lots in Willow Street only 60 years ago. They developed one on 656 Willow Street and built their family home, where mom continues to reside today. The properties on Willow Street are zoned for single-family dwellings. Many of the families that chose to build homes and raise their families, they are still the original owners who value homes with outdoor living spaces, yards, and well-maintained gardens. The mature landscapes are intentional. The years of care and The years of care and pride in the appearance of their home is clearly visible from the street. Willow Street has been a family-oriented street, a safe place for children to play, and neighbors have looked out for one another. Over the years, as the children of the original owners grew up, our parents have continued to keep up their properties, and owners cherish that they're able to remain in the comfort of their homes they've worked hard to take care of and maintain for decades. They appreciate the quiet and joy gardening. In my opinion, it was completely inappropriate for the current owner of 648 Willow Street to knock her mom's front door to seek her approval for his rezoning application. I understand he went to several of the surrounding neighbors in an attempt to gain their trust in his long-term intentions for this property. The property, as it is currently being run, is not even close to being satisfactory. There have been incredible noise, rude language at all hours, a huge increase in traffic flow coming and going from the house. To think now that the present owner wants to add a secondary suite is ludicrous. We know that this is about the owner having a desire to increase his rental income, and it's not my mom's job or any of the other vulnerable neighbors to help him make money. My mom is a senior, living on her own now since my dad passed. She would like and should be able to live in our family home comfortably and safely for as long as she is able. For the above reasons, we are strongly opposed to the rezoning application. We do not want this application to pass. We are not all in favor of a secondary suite application approval. Certainly are not at all in favor of a secondary suite application approval. Correction on that. Sincerely, Brenda Martin Webster. The next one is from Marion Martin, and it's a bunch of, my parents, Neil and Pearl Martin, bought three lots in Willow Street approximately 60 years ago, 656 Willow Street is the location where they built their home and where my mom still lives. And it is, has, it has been the family home for over 58 years. The properties on Willow Street are zoned for single-family dwellings. Many of the people who live in the neighborhood are original owners who chose the location due to the family-friendly environment, single-family zoning supports. These homeowners cherish that neighborhood environment they sought on Willow Street and has continued through this day, and also has been a strong positive factor for young families who purchase homes in the neighborhood. Willow Street is a family-oriented street, a safe place where children can play and neighbors can safely walk about to visit each other. The current owner of 648 Willow Street has petitioned to change the status of the existing single-family home to that of a multi-tenant rental unit. Homeowners on Willow Street are strongly against this. The property itself cannot support additional vehicle parking. A zoning change would have a negative impact on the neighborhood due to increased vehicle traffic and noise. A zoning change would also establish a negative precedent for additional multifamily units, a precedent that Willow Street residents strongly oppose. My mother wants the neighborhood atmosphere that single-family zoning encourages to remain unchanged. I support her, and I ask for you to keep the area and the street as single-family dwellings only. For the above reasons, we are strongly opposed to the rezoning application, and we do not want this application to pass. And as I said earlier, that was Marion, Marion Martin. We're getting closer here. We have two more. One, this one's from Tom Seams. My mother and dad purchased the property. Okay, are these, this is family, this is your son-in-law's?
No.
Son, yeah.
This is the lady on the other side of the rental unit.
Okay, I got it. I want to make sure.
Her sons.
I'm going to read them. I just want to make sure I understand what's, who the connection is here. I was raised on that street along with my brother and sister. We grew up among neighbors, and many are still there today. At one time, there were 70 kids living in a three-block radius. It was, is probably the nicest subdivision in Hope and one of the most picturesque towns in Canada. My mom, along with several other of her neighbors, would like to remain and age in place with many memories and much support between neighbors. I recognize that people have the right to rent their homes, and in many cases, tenants assimilate to the neighborhood and show respect to the neighbors. My mom's house is situated directly between the two houses that are now occupied by renters. The one in question at 648 Willow was previously occupied by two young entrepreneurs who are nice enough neighbors, but they own two large dogs which often jump the fence or a dog hole underneath the fence. These dogs would bark at my mom's guests, scaring them and rather throughout the yard. This young couple were aware, were away more than home and couldn't fairly manage the dogs. The current occupants, who are not allowed to smoke inside the unit, choose to sit out on their sun deck, smoking cigarettes and pot, talking back and forth throughout the day, and again into late hours of the evening. A noise complaint was registered with the town. The neighbors on the other side of my mom's room, well, all you need to do is drive by the house or go down the back alley to see how they care for this home. There are several uninsured vehicles stored in the backyard and one in the front. I know complaints have been made to the town in the past, but it seems like nothing is done. In the driveways are broken freezer and a pile of junk I couldn't go on. Now, my mother, who is in her mid-80s, can't sit outside and enjoy her back sun deck without the smell of pot, listening to profanity or staring at a junkyard. How is this fair? In my opinion, it's unreasonable, unreasonable to permit the owner of 648 Willow to further develop the house with a secondary suite, which would result in adding even more renters. Right now, the tenants don't have a car, but who's to say those moving into the suite won't too fill the backyard with uninsured vehicles? More noise, more traffic. Our seniors in Hope are the backbone of the community, they're business owners, volunteers, workers, teachers, nurses, and help grow Hope into the town it is today. I would ask that you don't support the development of the secondary suite in this subdivision and allow our seniors to enjoy peace and comfort in their home. Tom Seams. This last submission, to whom I concern, it has recently come to my attention that a rezoning request has been placed for Willow Street to introduce duplex housing allowing for increased density. In light of this request, I would like to raise concern based on consideration to the existing residents in the area, many of whom are elderly and have residents for, have been residents for 50 or more years. My mother is one of those residents and has spent the majority of her life in the town both as a resident and business owner. As with any town or city, neighborhoods evolve and change. This is expected. In the past 10 years alone, there have been multiple changes impacting my mother. However, the changes that the residents of Willow Street have experienced have been affecting both safety and quality of life. The increase in living density will result in increased vehicle traffic. This street and area still does not have sidewalks for the safety of the residents. For homeowners and for younger families moving into the area, they are forced to walk on the roadway. Additionally, with the transition of single-family homes to rental spaces, existing residents had to deal with increased noise levels, including noise well into the night, impacting sleep and quality of life, despite the fact that no noise issues have been raised to the owner who is currently seeking the rezoning. The issue continues. Beyond the noise levels, the increased transition to rental space in the neighborhood has also resulted in accumulation of unsettling junk, including broken-down vehicles, vehicle parts that impact the ability to enjoy the backyard space. In conjunction with the mess, there's also been the introduction of vermin that were never previously in issue. My mother has experienced rats in her garage, which have gone so far as to damage wires in her car. Overall, I have significant concern regarding this request for rezoning as such. I would like to add my voice to the concern for the ongoing safety and quality of life and for the rest of the street. Chris Seams or Seams?
Seams.
Seams, thank you very much. So that's the last of the submissions. Anyone else who would like to speak who has not spoken at this time? Now would be the time to do it. Second call. Anyone else who would like to speak that has not spoken?
I'd just like to say one thing. Do I have to go first?
Yes, please. Name and address.
Pearl Martin, 656 Willow. I would just like to say that when Mike approached me the first time, I listened to him, and in some way, pretty good. And when he came back last time after the petition was signed, he wanted me to consider kicking my knee off there. And I explained to him that things had changed drastically since we first mentioned it. Things have changed. So I'm just hoping that this won't go through, because we've got a wonderful street, 16 great kids on the street in the neighborhood. Sure be nice to you.
Thank you for your submission. Once again, I'll call for anyone, any more submissions? Second time, any more submissions? Yes, sir? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Bradley Johnson. I have recently purchased a property on 655 Willow. I haven't yet moved in yet. I can attest to what has been said regarding the letters and the noise level. I've been looking for my belongings into the garage, and I have noticed cars speeding down the road. I have a daughter, a one-year-old, and I'm concerned that this neighborhood might not, I mean, we bought the neighborhood to, because of the children and because of how it is, and I'm just hoping it works out. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And any more submissions? Second call. Any more submissions? Third, final call. Thank you very much. I now declare the public hearing closed, and note that no further submissions, either verbal or written, regarding the proposed bylaw can be made to counsel. Thank you for your attendance tonight.